Having been advised that we have a quorum of 100 present, I call the town meeting of West Boylston of October 21st, 2024 to order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment, just a moment of silence in remembrance of our fellow townsfolk who have passed on since our last meeting. Thank you. You may be seated. Anyone who's not a registered voter in the town of West Boylston, we have two rows reserved for you. If you're advising a town board or committee, you may sit with that board or committee. In conducting our business tonight, on votes requiring a simple majority, a voice vote is usually sufficient. If the voice vote is not clear, we will use our orange cards. If you did not get an orange card, please go out to the table and get an orange card right away so that you are prepared in case we need to do a hand count of votes. On votes requiring a supermajority, two-thirds or 90%, I think there's one 90% article on the warrant tonight. If the voice vote is clear, and the clearest is unanimity, but vote your conscience by all means. But if the voice vote is clear, I'll call it by the voice vote. If not, then we will use the cards. Also in conducting our business tonight, someone might wish to amend a motion that is before this body. You can get an amendment form from the town clerk right here. Any such motion to amend must be stated in the positive, and it must be specific. And you then need to fill that out and then return it to the town clerk so that we could consider it. There are microphones at the front of each aisle. You do not need to raise your hand if you would like to speak. You just go down to the microphone that's closest to you, most convenient, and form a line. And assuming that you'll be orderly, we'll just take the comments or questions in order, and I will recognize you at the microphone. When you do speak, please identify yourself, first and last name, and your place of residence within the town. The town clerk is trying to record all this. And so if you could please say it clearly and slowly enough so that she can get it, that will be of great assistance in documenting the meeting as required. When you speak, please speak only to the motion that is before us at that time. We don't want to go back to things we've already discussed. We're not looking ahead to the next one. We're doing the one that's in front of us at that time. We don't rely on fixed rules like Robert's Rules of Order or anything. We have dealt with conducting the meeting according to traditions that have served us well. As long as they continue to serve us well, that's the way I would like to continue doing it. I do reference town meeting times for guidance, but it is not a definitive reference binding on our meeting. I will try to end debate or discussion at the appropriate time. If you have a mobile device with you, this is the time to silence it, if you haven't already done so. An emotion is now in order to waive the reading of the remainder of the warrant and the return of service thereto and to refer to it as subject matter only. Is there such a motion? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Frieden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Great. Article one, authorization to hear reports of the officers and committees of the town. Is there a motion? I'm not sure you're coming through the PA.
All right. Christine Pedoni, Chair of the Select Board. I move the town vote to hear the reports of the officers and standing committee of the town.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Frieden, thank you. Any discussion necessary? All in favor of hearing reports, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. We will hear the reports. Are there any reports? Hearing none. Let's move on to Article two. Authorization to pay bills from previous fiscal years. Is there a motion?
James Morrissey, Vice Chair of the Select Board. I move the town vote to transfer from Certified Free Cash the sum of $37.87 to pay an FY-23 invoice to Fisher Auto Parts, the sum of $892.33 to pay for an FY-24 invoice to Pitney Bowes, and the sum of $49.29 to Fleet Pride.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Pedoni. I guess a brief explanation might be helpful, but...
For a variety of reasons, bills from a previous fiscal year that are not paid during the fiscal year and are not encumbered. This is an article that is typically included on the warrant in case there are outstanding invoices. Details of the specific bills are included in the packet. This is a nine-tenths vote required.
Thank you. Any questions or...I'm sorry, any recommendations from town boards or committees?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Hearing none. Any question or comment from the public? Hearing none, and I remind you, it's a nine-tenths vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. That's more than nine-tenths. Motion carries. Article three. Authorization to modify fiscal year 2025 appropriations and other necessary adjustments to the fiscal year 2025 budget. And there's a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move the vote to transfer the sum of $75,000 from Certified Free Cash for the purpose of funding the fiscal year 2025 Town Administrator salaries budget appropriation account number
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Explanation or presentation?
Explanation, no presentation. This is a standard annual authorization to raise appropriate funds, to transfer money within the financial year 25 accounts to cover deficiencies in some accounts from available
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any opinion you want to render on this?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Finance Committee received the details on this just today, so we haven't had a chance to go through it in great detail. Sorry. Is that better? So we've gone through the numbers. The numbers work, so the Finance Committee is recommending an approval of this article, but since we've had very little time to review the details, don't want it to be construed as an endorsement of the circumstances associated with the change in the town administrator.
Thank you. Any other town boards or committees? Hearing none. Question or comment from the public?
Sandy Minersma, 20 Maple Street. What's the $75,000 covering?
Does anyone from the town able to answer that?
So there's a little write-up. I don't know if this was out on the table. Town administrators' salary budget line, financial year 2025 salaries was $208,000. Town administrator salaries paid through 6/30 was $176,997. So the remaining balance in that account was $31,000. The interim town administrator salaries is $32,280. And there is estimated financial year 2025 cost of the new town administrator contract, $73,500. So the estimated total is 105, but with the remaining available balance, the net is $74,777, rounded up to $75,000.
So this has to do with the transition of the town administrator leaving?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other question or comment from the public? If you want to speak, just go on right down, and I'll recognize you once you're there, but we'll just keep things moving. If you could move to the microphone a little, you know, as someone else is speaking quietly, don't be rude, but go ahead and get in place for the next comment. Go ahead, please.
This is just a general comment. We're still having a really hard time hearing, like even when the person asked the question, we couldn't hear it at all. So I'm just wondering maybe if the sound system can be turned up a little? Because I do think that they are speaking clearly, we're just not hearing it.
Okay.
Could I request that folks sitting in the back maybe move forward? There are a ton of open seats, like 18 rows with no one in them, so...
We still can't hear at all.
So, folks, let's please eat the microphone, okay? Get your mouth right up close to it.
Can we do it again?
No, I think you're good. I think we're able to take action. But if you would please get your mouth really close so that they can hear you even if they are in the back, okay? Thank you. Further question or comment on the motion before us? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Article three is passed. Article four, authorization to purchase a replacement ambulance. Is there a motion?
Vanessa Kuzminovsky, Select Board. I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $280,000 from ambulance receipts reserved and the sum of $190,000 from Certified Free Cash to purchase and equip a new ambulance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any explanation or presentation on this?
This new ambulance will replace the 2018 ambulance with 102,000 miles. The ambulance was originally scheduled to be replaced in fiscal year '28, but is being advanced to fiscal year '27 due to the high mileage. And the lead time for an ambulance in order, from order to delivery is approximately two years.
Thank you. Town boards or committees, any recommendation, endorsement, or comment?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Both the Finance Committee and the Capital Investment Board recommend approval. As a note to go along with this, the monies that you're approving tonight, the allocation out of Free Cash is intended to be reversed probably about two years from now as more funds are accrued into the ambulance receipts account. So that money should go back into Free Cash. The other thing I would note is the Capital Investment Board has the ambulances right now scheduled on a five-year replacement cycle. And based on the actual condition of the ambulances and the reliability, we're going to be reevaluating, moving that to four years. And that's endemic in this request.
Thank you. Any other town boards or committees? Hearing none. Question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article four is passed. Article five, authorization, sorry, authorization funds for capital improvement purchases. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. My name is Raj. I move the town to approve Article five as written in the warrant, deleting the words or take any other action relative thereto.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Frieden. Any explanation or presentation on this?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. The vote taken on October 16, 2023 was to appropriate $26,500 for the removal of dead pine trees on the Crescent Street. The pine trees have been removed, and there is $9,560 remaining. This article will allow those funds to be used for general tree maintenance and care throughout the town.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any opinions?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Any question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article six, authorization to transfer funds to the Capital Investment Fund. Is there a motion?
I'm going to try this one. Can anyone hear this one? Christina Pedoni, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $500,000 from Certified Free Cash to the Capital Investment Fund.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Explanation or presentation?
These monies can be used for future pay-as-you-go capital. Requires a two-third vote. Currently, the balance of the fund is $927,602.73. Adding $500,000 will bring the balance of this account to $1,427,602.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any opinions?
Not surprisingly, Finance Committee and Capital Investment Board recommend approval.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Any question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. The ayes have it. Article six is passed. Article seven. Authorization to appropriate funds to the Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund. Is there a motion?
There is. I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $100,000 from Certified Free Cash to the Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund or OPEB.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any explanation on this?
These are benefits other than pensions offered to employees after they have leave employment, retiree medical and life insurance. All towns that offer retiree benefits have always had an OPEB liability. However, the amount of the liability was largely unknown until the Government Accountability Standards Board directed all municipalities to quantify their liabilities in 2001. Initial estimates of these liabilities were first released in 2014. The town is under no statutory obligation to fund its OPEB liability. However, funding OPEB liability is one of the elements considered by rating agencies when determining our bond rating.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any opinions?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thanks. Any others? Hearing none. Let's hear from the public.
Christine Biscotti, 180 Ave. I have a few questions. What is the current balance?
Does anyone from the town know the answer to this question?
Mr. Moderator, it's in the handout.
Is it?
The balance after appropriation would be $956,550.
Thank you. Further questions?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Any other question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article eight, authorization to transfer funds to the stabilization fund. Is there a motion?
Is this working?
Yes. Yes.
Great. Mark Frieden, Select Board. I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $200,000 from Certified Free Cash to the stabilization fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Explanation?
The current balance in the stabilization fund is $1,973,206.46. The planned motion to this article is to transfer $200,000 from Free Cash, which will bring the new balance to $2,173,206.46. This funding will bring the balance of the stabilization fund to 7.2% of the financial year 25 total operating budget.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any opinions?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any others? Hearing none. Question or comment from the public?
Pat Crowley, 64 Bowen Street. The rating agencies are looking for a 5% or more balance in our stabilization funds. I'm just curious as to why we're putting $200,000 in there when we're already above that 5%.
Anyone know an answer to that?
First, we need new mics, so I'm going to use cash for that. So I'm told 5% is the minimum. I'm not going to debate with you, Pat, because I know you're going to school me on the number, but I am told 5% is the minimum, and it was recommended at the time we put the money in here.
Thank you.
You didn't like my answer?
Further question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article eight passes. Article nine, is a vote to appropriate funds for community preservation fund projects as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. Is there a motion?
Neil Peterson, Community Preservation Committee. I move the town vote to approve Article nine as printed in the warrant, deleting the words "under the direction of the town administrator" and the words "or take any other action relative thereto."
Thank you. Before this is seconded, I note that there are two parts to this. Do you want to include that in your motion?
It would be wherever they appear.
I'll take that as a yes. Is there a second to the motion as restated?
Second.
Thank you. Any explanation on this?
I believe there's some information in the packet, but essentially, the Affordable Housing Trust recommendation is to fund working capital needs for the Affordable Housing Trust duties and activities. And then the appropriation for the historical preservation is for the cemetery trustees to recane several antique chairs that are located in the chapel at the cemetery.
So I think we need some clarification because I don't...were the numbers said, and I missed them? Or did that not get into the motion? So we got that there are two parts, but I don't know that we got the numbers stated. So...
The motion was to approve Article nine as printed in the warrant, subject to the
Okay. And so the numbers in the warrant are your reference, which I believe are $25,000 for Part A and $3,000 for Part B, just for clarification purposes. Do I understand that correctly?
That's correct.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any opinions?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any others? Hearing none. Any question or comment from the public? Hearing none. We will vote the parts separately. And so for Part A, which is the $25,000 appropriation to fund for affordable housing purposes, that's Part A, and we're going to vote that first. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Part A passes. Part B is $3,000 for historic preservation purposes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Part B passes as well. That deals with all of Article nine. Thank you very much. Article 10. Authorization to appropriate funds to reduce the fiscal year 25 tax rate. Is there a motion?
Vanessa Kuzminovsky, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $150,162 from the Tax Levy Stabilization Fund to reduce or stabilize the fiscal year 25 tax rate.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any explanation?
The Tax Levy Stabilization Fund is funded by deposits from recreational marijuana sales tax revenues. These funds are then used to reduce or offset the tax rate. The planned motion under this article is to transfer $150,162. The only authorized use of these funds is for tax rate reduction. Please refer to the orange handout to see how action under the article would affect the current tax rate in bill.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any opinions?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Any question or comment from the public?
Sandy Minersma, 20 Maple Street. $150,000 is what's on the table this year. Can we have any kind of reference for what it was last year and the year previous? Are the revenues going up or are they going down?
Thank you for your...
Not really the part of the article, but I still want to know.
Thank you for your question. Anybody have knowledge for that?
We're down $21,000 this year.
Okay. Further question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article 10 passes. Thank you. Article 11, authorization to amend the personnel bylaw of the general bylaws. Is there a motion?
Cheryl Chris...Cheryl Christant, 130 Hillside Village Drive, Chair of the Personnel Board. I move the town vote to approve Article 11 as printed in the warrant, deleting the words "or take any action relative thereto."
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Frieden. Any explanation or presentation on this?
The article is to create the position for the Council on Aging Outreach Worker. The position would assist the West Boylston seniors with applying for and obtaining services. The Personnel Board met on October 2nd, and we endorsed this position.
Thank you. Any other town boards or committees have an opinion that they want to express? Hearing none. Questions or comments from the public?
Dave Fiumia, 86 Sterling Street. I'm also the Chairman of the Council of Aging, and I'd like to know, this is something that's been going on for a long time, that we've been looking to outsource outreach research person. How soon can we go ahead and apply to see about getting someone for this position? We really need it.
Does anyone know the answer to that? A fair enough question.
I was...
Go ahead.
So this creates the position. It in here doesn't say the cost to fund, so I think that would be separate. Am I wrong? No? So we would, one, create the fund, that's what this is doing. Second, appropriate the funds to be used, which isn't here yet. This is just creating it.
So would we have to wait till next May?
Yes, to appropriate funds.
Okay, that's really unsad, but okay.
Further question or comment from the public?
Hold on. Maybe I'm...
Hi. Lisa Clark Vicklin, I'm the Director of the COA. Initially, once this position gets established, the idea is to use the Formula Grant for the first year.
Okay.
So it wouldn't come under Tom's budget, it wouldn't be under my budget. We'd use the Formula Grant and then go from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Fiumia, does that answer your question?
Further questions or comments from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article 11 passes. Article 12, authorization to amend the general bylaws. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article 12. I move the town vote to approve Article 12 as printed in the warrant, deleting the words "or take any other action relative thereto."
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Padoni. Any explanation on this?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. This article would eliminate the townwide planning committee from the bylaw.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any opinions? Hearing none. Any question or comment from the public?
Neil Peterson, 67 Malden Street. I'm just curious, I understand the explanation that was offered as to what the effect of the amendment would be, but I'm just curious as to what prompted the assessment by the Select Board that the amendment is necessary at this time.
Yes. The townwide planning committee has not met since 2018. So, the committee was established in 1994 with the mission of encouraging, assisting, and reviewing long- and short-term planning efforts by the boards, committees, and officials of the town, and incorporate these plans into a comprehensive townwide plan. So, the committee has not met long, long, long time. So, it seems like, you know, there is no use for this committee.
Follow-up question?
Go ahead.
Is the committee currently staffed?
So, do you mind, Rajapai? Currently, it is not. It, we had a, we have a lot of boards and committees that have a lot of openings, and in, you'll see this in some other things, we went through a lot of those that hadn't met in over a decade. We had people that had passed long ago on some of them that were out there, and we're trying to figure out what the charge were, we're trying to figure out the last meeting, what they were intended to do. This one back in 1994, I think there were 13 volunteer positions. One of them was, the town administrator was on this board, and it just never really materialized into anything else, and nothing was done. It looked like it kind of was exciting and then fizzled out, so that's why it came up.
One last follow-up, if I may.
Go ahead.
If there were interest in staffing the committee, would the Select Board view that committee as serving a valuable function for the town?
If this, so, we took this and a few, sorry.
Go ahead.
Through you, moderator. So, what our thoughts were as we looked to consolidate and clean up some of the boards, that if there was interest in, say, townwide planning committee, which this one was overseeing activities that are currently really being done by the celebrations committee, we have SWAT that does their activities, if there was a board that wanted to oversee to make sure all those other boards and committees were doing their events within town, I think we would bring that forward back to the Select Board and maybe not to a 13-person volunteer board, maybe five, but I think that we welcome any volunteers. Are you signing up for one?
Well, I don't believe it exists anymore, does it?
We could if you...
Okay, let's go over here.
Chris Burgl, 340 Goodell Street. Just a quick comment. When I go around on the town's website, the townwide planning board, townwide planning has members. Some of you are members, according to the website, as well as Sue Miola, Norb Chanas, Tony Sanders, Ray DeSanti, so I guess you just haven't met, is what it comes down to.
Since 2018. And some, I think, are appointed, so every time the Select Board does their appointments, I think there's a majority that get put on other boards. That's why her name appears on all these other boards. It's a bonus of volunteering. But they haven't met since 2018.
Okay. Well, all right, I guess, I'm just questioning the leadership and why it would not have, I mean, is it really the town administrator that had been facilitating that in the past? Because I know I'm going back to when it was formed, I was on that committee at one time, and it did some good work, but I'm just curious.
It was, it was in 1994. It looked like it was really driven by the town administrator at the time, and like many, we have several boards that have been years and years without meeting. It kind of had its, it's almost like a committee that was resurrected for a certain purpose, but then never actually dissolved.
I understand. I'm just thinking, I'm thinking out loud with all the planning that we have to go through, is this, maybe this isn't the right committee for it, but it was just something that we might want to, just, anyways, thanks, I think I'm good.
Thank you. Next over here.
Jim Ryan, Monticello Ave. Yeah, the townwide planning committee comes together to create a master plan for the town. It's not a committee that meets regularly, meets with a purpose. And I, I guess my concern here is, I don't know if it's changed, but having a current comprehensive townwide plan is a requirement for certain funding sources. So, I'm not surprised the committee hasn't met, because there hasn't been a need to develop a master plan or to update the current master plan. I'm concerned with the concept of taking it out of the bylaws, because I think it may be needed at some point.
Thank you. Another follow-up here?
Final comment, more than a question. I'm of the opinion that a latent board not functioning, but still with the capacity to function, is, could still serve a useful purpose, and that terminating that board would make it more difficult to reinstitute it if a need were to arise.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Ann Parsons Marshaw, 103 Central Street. I think we need a planning board. I think that we live in an era of a lot of complexity. I think there's a lot of changes that are coming forward in our town, and to have a group that might be able to oversee and monitor and evaluate any comprehensive townwide plan might indeed be of help to our Select Board. Thank you.
Point of clarification, I think that there is a planning board, if I'm not mistaken, but not necessarily a functioning planning committee. Do I understand that correctly, Select Board?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sandy Minersma, 20 Maple Street. Question, Mr. Ryan brought up the point that this was, that this committee is used for when we're completing our master plan, and that's required for grants. Isn't that an every-year, 10-year thing? And if this hasn't met in 2018, then doesn't that mean we're gonna need to start doing this again soon?
Does anyone know an answer to that?
So, it should be updated and reviewed every five years. So, based on the makeup of this board, this board, it is, it should be presented by this board at town meeting, approved by the voters, shall be reviewed and updated at least every five years. It's a comprehensive townwide plan that shall include land use, open space, economic development, facilities, and any other plans necessary to fulfill the future needs of the town and citizens. Currently, we have a planning board, a zoning board, economic development, earth removal. We have a building department. We have an open space board, or committee, sorry, open space committee, saying probably the name of that wrong. And we also have a number of celebrations committees that are doing events, our economic, SWAT committee that is also doing recycling events. So, this board, from every, and I could be wrong, I was not here in 1994. I have never seen a report since I've been, in the last 15 years that I've been actively involved, but they've, I've never seen them facilitate any land use, open space, or economic development facilities, and have superseding plans that would have future plans for the town. I'm not, I personally didn't understand how this board would oversee a planning board, a zoning board, earth removal board, and some of those other boards that are responsible legally for some of these things, but maybe it was made for, the thought was they were gonna be organizing all of those boards to do that work.
I think exactly that is the purpose of that, and if you talk to the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission before we delete this, I think it's a better choice. I don't think we should pass this article.
Thank you. Further question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
You're gonna have to hold up your cards, I'm sorry. I'll ask you to be patient while we do that. Okay, everybody get your card ready. All right. If you are in favor of the motion, which is to delete the committee, hold up your card Okay, put them down. If you are opposed, and you want to vote no to not delete it, raise your card now. Thank you. The noes have it.
We have two vacancies, if folks want to volunteer.
Please volunteer. Article 13. Authorization to amend the general bylaws. Is there a motion?
Yes. I move the town vote to approve Article 12 as printed in the warrant, deleting the words "or take any other action relative thereto." Article 13, sorry.
Yeah, we're on 13.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm not sure if I followed. I apologize if I've looked at the wrong thing.
It's printed wrong in my packet. It's to catch me off guard. We'll try this again. I move the town vote to approve Article 13 as printed in the warrant, deleting the words "or take any other action relative thereto."
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. Any explanation on this?
This article allows fees collected for various activities at the Council on Aging to be expended for costs associated with building use for both weekends and weekdays.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any opinions? Hearing none. Questions or comments from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Article 13 is passed. Article 14. Authorization to amend the general bylaws. Is there a motion?
There is. Mark Frieden, Select Board. I move the town vote to approve Article 14 as printed in the warrant, deleting the words "or take any other action relative thereto."
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any explanation on this?
This is a pretty good article, I must say. This article and the next three are all a big project that the town's been taking on to codify the zoning and general bylaws in the town. Article 14 is the general bylaws renumbering part of the codification. It is to see if the town will vote to renumber and recaption the general bylaws of the town by assigning a chapter article number to each of the general bylaws, be renumbering each section of each bylaw accordingly, inserting chapter, article, section, and subsection titles, and updating internal references to reflect the new numbering system. I'll set forth in the final draft of the code that's available for review, if you want to.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any opinions?
Select Board and Bylaw Committee recommend approval.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Any question or comment from the public?
Neil Peterson, 67 Malden Street. Just a question on the amendment to Chapter 25 regarding the Community Preservation Committee with the additional language, including the consideration of regional projects for community preservation. Just curious whether any particular initiative prompted this change in the language, or if it's just generally advisable.
Mr. Frieden?
Let me look it up. I have a book of all of the changes, there's hundreds of changes. Let me just grab that, and I'll look it up. Hey, I thought it was gonna be a fast meeting.
Mr. Moderator, through you, may I direct into the language specifically? I have it right here.
Yes.
Oh, sure.
Article... 25-2A. 25-2... So, it's a long read. This'll be good. Community Preservation Committee, let me look down here. The first sentence of Section 25-2A reads, "The Community Preservation Committee shall study the needs, possibilities, and resources of the town regarding community preservation." General law, chapter, Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5, the statute upon which the section is based, was amended in 2012," to read the revised text.
So, Mr., I'm sorry, just for clarification, do I understand that this is not intended to be a substantive change? It's just that the underlying law that deals with this subject changed by the Commonwealth, and that we're just trying to match it?
Yes. Mass. General Law changed in 2012, and we're just catching up with that change. Thank you.
Thank you. Further question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Article 14 passes. Article 15. Authorization to amend the general bylaws.
I'll do this one, too. Another great one. I move the town vote to approve Article 15 as printed in the warrant, deleting the words "or take any other action relative thereto."
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Actually...
Explanation? Go ahead.
Explanation, yes. Through you, or something. The question that was just asked was actually probably part of this article. The first article was about just the numbering system, which if you look through the table of contents, that's mainly what would be revised. This is the article that actually changes the things like what you were talking about. And there's other changes like that. General changes, like standardizing the word "by" hyphen "law" to "by law," Select Men, the Board of Select, Select Board, Select Board Members, I think is what it said. Those sort of things, and then some specific ones, when things like what was brought up, General Law changed, and we're just sort of catching up with that now. Whatever, the numbers changed, or the text changed, or something like that.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any opinions to render?
Select Board and Bylaw Committee recommend approval.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Questions or comments from the public?
Hi, Stephanie Peterson, 445 Prospect Street.
Can you get right up on the microphone and...
I just have a question about Chapter 7, the Agricultural Commission. Section 7-3C is added to read, and then it goes on to say something about the Board of Health proposing regulations on farmers' markets and farms, and I'm just wondering if somebody from the Board of Health or the Agricultural Commission can explain what the purpose of this would be, and if it would be for the Board of Health to impose regulations and other rules or restrictions as they might apply to farms or farmers' markets, farm stands, what exactly this would do.
Any of those named folks attending and able to answer?
Dan McCurio, 204 Lancaster Street.
Can you get up on the microphone, please?
204 Lancaster Street. I'm a former member of the AgCom, does that count?
If you think you have an answer, please, go ahead.
So, my guess is that the Select Board's trying to modernize some of these bylaws. 7-3C in particular, they pulled this from the Board of Health general bylaws, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 11130. I actually had a question on this myself, because this is almost verbatim what's on the Mass. General Laws. the Mass. General Laws under the Boards of Health. They did omit one part, because there's one sentence where they talk of that the Board shall, under, if the municipality has an agricultural commission, which we do, the Board shall, doesn't say may, it says shall, provide the agricultural commission with a copy of any proposed regulations. So I have a question why that sentence is omitted here, and then can we add that wording here?
Okay. Does anyone have an answer to the, first, the question of why isn't it included?
I can read the explanation that we have. It's part of our, what we did for the codification. Would you care to listen to that?
Sure.
Okay. So, we note that Mass. General Law, Chapter 111, Subsection 31, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Amended by Chapter 321 Acts of 2020 requires the Board of Health to provide the Agricultural Commission with any proposed regulation on the following: The Agricultural Commission has 45 days to review farmers' markets as defined in the Department of Regulations, farms as defined in Section 1A of Chapter 128, the non-commercial keeping of poultry, livestock, or bees, or the non-commercial production of fruit, vegetables, or horticultural plants. The town might wish to add Subsection C to this section to match the statute. Subsection C is...
Isn't that in there?
I don't know. So we deferred the decision until after code publication, I believe, was, or revises suggested. It's what, actually, according to this, I don't know what we actually put into the answer. But that, this is the general law changes.
Okay. I mean, it's almost verbatim to the Mass. General Laws under the Boards of Health. If you're gonna do that, can we just add that? Can we actually go word for word? I think some members might feel more comfortable stating that the Board of Health shall provide the Agricultural Commission. I know they've got the 45-day mark, but if the Agricultural Commission's not notified, that 45 days is kind of meaningless.
So you're talking about the Part C, the Commission shall review proposed Board of Health regulations on the following, all that, instead of the mission of? Is that what we would change it to?
No, we would just take it right from the Mass. General Laws. So, one of the few things that's not verbatim is it says, "Provide the Municipal Agricultural Commission with a copy of the proposed regulation." That's in Mass. General Laws. That's not in the proposed bylaw change locally.
Okay. Can you ask her if we're gonna amend it?
You're interested in writing this in yourself, Mr. Frieden? Since it was your motion? Somebody needs to write it down.
Do we have the forms?
So...
Through, through the moderator, can I ask a question?
Before you do, the first commenter, we didn't get your name. Could you, before things go farther afield, I want to make sure that we document...
Stephanie Peterson, 445 Prospect Street.
Thank you. Ms. Padoni, your question?
What statute were you citing to? When you... Statute, sorry.
The state one?
Yeah.
Chapter, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 111. Gets harder. Am I the only one?
There should be a section number of some kind as well.
Yep. It's 31. So, Chapter, Mass. General Law, Chapter 111, Section 31. It's the second paragraph. Yeah, it's the second paragraph. It starts with, "In a municipality with the Municipal Agricultural Commission." Can I borrow those?
Through the moderator, just to clarify, you're just looking for that one sentence to be added so that it matches exactly what's in...
Sure, or just, you know, cut and paste. Can we just cut and paste from the Mass. General Laws?
Because we're at town meeting, we actually have to write it down, sadly.
Old-fashioned cut and paste.
So, Mr. Frieden, I think, is going to enlist your aid. Let's go to the next commenter. If you guys can make some room for the next commenter, please? Mr. Frieden, could you move this way, please, so that the next commenter could, you can get some horizontal space there, too?
Hi. Amy Merrill. I live on Hosmer Street. I am a pending Agricultural Commission member. I was. I have been reappointed by the Select Board, just not sworn in yet. So, I just want to assure anyone who's concerned about this, this is really, this is kind of a good thing that the AgCom's been hoping for, that we can work with the Select Board, the Board of Health, we can review these things, and be helpful and assist. And that's what we want to do, and that's what we can do. So this is really a good thing for any farmers or people that are interested in farmers' markets or any kind of agricultural pursuit. This is a good thing.
Thank you. Further question or comment from the public?
Keith Brown, 14 Scarlet Street.
He needs you to get right up on the mic.
Keith Brown, 14 Scarlet Street. The last thing anyone's ever said is that I'm quiet. So, either. Keith Brown, 14 Scarlet Street. Matter?
Thank you.
Question on Section 25-2B there. Why would we outlaw purchasing artificial turf for sports fields?
The guy who might be able to answer that, I think, is otherwise occupied, unless someone else knows the answer.
And you have a reference for something purchased before 2012. Trying to figure that one out. But we have little sports fields here.
Further question or comment from the public? All right. I have reason to think we may get an amendment to consider imminently. Thanks for your patience. When you're trying to word it right, it sometimes takes a little time.
Yes.
So, through the moderator, can I give, I know we're up there writing something, but I've been given an answer to answer Mr. Brown's question in back.
Go ahead.
Wait for him to look at me, so he knows he can hear me. I think I have an answer to your turf question. All right. So, it looks like after July 1st, 2012, we are not allowed to use CPA funds for artificial turf. So it's, it was, it was the law that was written into place, so we're just bringing that up to where it should be.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have, this is Lisa Noack. I'm, Lisa Noack, I'm Pioneer Street. I have a question on Section 146C about swimming pools. It says that every outdoor residential swimming pool shall be completely surrounded at all times, whether or not the same is filled with water, by fence or other structure in conformance with the current requirements of the state building code. Does that only apply for new swimming pools, or is that all current and existing? Like, if you have a swimming pool, you had a four-foot fence surround it, now they've changed the building code to be a six-foot fence, does that mean everybody with a swimming pool has to be constantly monitoring the building code and updating their fences?
Just a second. I'm looking through my book I just got.
Hang on.
So, through the moderator, I don't see that it talks of just new pools. It says that it's adhering to the building code, more than, and it brings up enclosures that are more than 50 years old, which I imagine you're, if we have a 50-year-old pool, you've probably done a few things or provisions. But I don't see anything in here, either way, that says that it's for just new or existing, which I...
So that means that every, every family that's got a pool in their backyard and in-ground pool has to monitor the building code and make sure their fences adequate?
Well, it says that at least five feet to six feet high, depending on the type. So I'm gonna go with, when I did look at this one, in the position of the Bylaw Committee, I hadn't, I had not seen anything under five feet before 2015. But I could be wrong, and I don't believe we have a building inspector here to speak to state building code.
Ms. Padoni, point of clarification, is this something that the town is driving the bus on, or is it just complying with state law?
Based on what I'm reading, it's complying with state law, Mr. Moderator.
Okay.
I, sorry, I took your book, but...
I don't know, I could walk around neighborhoods and find lots of fences that are not five-foot. I don't even know what the state code is, so...
Thank you. I think we have some progress on the amendment. So there is a, an amendment that has been submitted. I think I can read it. And the subject is Authorization to Amend the General Bylaws, which is, in particular, Article 15 that is before you. And this is a motion in writing by, is it Daniel? Mercurio? There you are. Did you move? I thought you were over there. All right. Brief sanity check. By Mr. Mercurio. To add the following text that should match Mass. General Laws, Chapter 111, Section The Board of Health shall, shall provide the Agricultural Commission with a copy of the proposed regulations, and that this would be added before the text that says, "The Commission shall have," and so they're saying where to insert it, okay? And, Mr. Mercurio, is it, is it your representation that the way that you read it there is the way you wrote it here?
Yes, that's what we did.
Thank you. Is there a second on this motion to amend?
Second.
Thank you.
So when you say verbatim, in Mass. General Laws, they say Municipal Agricultural Commission. Do you, I mean, do you have to get that fussy?
You didn't, so no.
Right. And somebody reading that will still know what it means. It'll be hard to, yeah, we would hope.
I don't think I need to clarify anything further. So there's a motion to amend so that the Board of Health will be required to give the Agricultural Commission a copy of proposed regulations. So we're not voting the whole article, we're just voting, do we want to amend Article 15 by sticking this text into the place where it's specified? That's the issue before us. Is there any discussion of this amendment? We've already heard discussion on the issue, so I'm not surprised that there might not be any. And hearing none, I'm gonna call for a vote, and you're gonna say yes if you want to stick this extra text in, okay? If you don't want this extra text to go in, then vote no, okay? So, all in favor of inserting this text, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Well, that's easy. All right. The extra text is in. Is there any further discussion of Article 15? All right. We will now vote Article 15 as amended with the extra text. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article 15 passes as amended. Thank you very much. And I appreciate everyone's patience while we did the machinations to dot the i's and cross the t's. Thank you very much. Article 16, Authorization to Amend the Zoning Bylaw. Mr. Frieden, a motion?
Another great one. I move the town vote to approve Article 16 as printed in the warrant, deleting the words, or take any other action relative thereto.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Explanation on this one?
The explanation is similar to the 14 article. This is for zoning bylaws, which are different than general bylaws, but the same sort of a change. This is just changing the, like I read before, the renumbering each section, subsection in the bylaw accordingly, inserting art, sorry, inserting article and section and subsection titles, and updating internal references to reflect. So this is similar to the Article 14, but for the zoning bylaws.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any opinions?
Select Board and Bylaw recommend approval.
Thank you. Any others? Question or comment from the public on the numbering and title, section, section titles and stuff like that? Because there's Article 17 to follow. Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. That meets the two-thirds requirement. Article 17, the last article.
Best for last. I move the town vote to approve Article 17 as printed in the warrant, deleting the words or take any other action relative thereto.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Explanation on this one?
This one, again, is similar to the general bylaw changes for the, the same sort of Select Board, or Select Men to Select Board bylaw with a hyphen to address the word bylaw. Board, or Select Men to Select Board bylaw with a hyphen to address the word bylaw, those sort of changes, as well as some detailed changes that were in the, in the warrant also.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any opinion on Article 17?
Select Board and Bylaw Committee recommend approval.
Thank you. Any others? Any question or comment from the public? Hearing none. This is also a two-thirds vote, okay? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. The ayes have it. There being no other business before us, I will entertain a motion to dissolve the meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second? No discussion on a motion to dissolve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries and the meeting is dissolved. Thank you all for coming out and for your patience tonight.